Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for May 8th, 2025. May we have roll call?
Council members Asadrian, Rotman, Garpetian, Kasakian, Mayor Najarian.
Thank you. May we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the Thursday, May 8th, 2025, Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on May 5th, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. The first item?
The first item is Budget Study Session Number One Fiscal Year 2024-2025, General Fund Third Quarter Update and Year and Protection Proposed Fiscal Year 2025-2026, Citywide Budget and Five-Year General Fund Forecast.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan, before you start, I want to let my colleagues know this presentation is essentially going to have three sections to it, if I'm correct, based on our conversation, and I would be taking a pause between each section so council can pose their questions at that moment. So rather than interrupt the specific presentations, hold your questions, formulate them as incisively as you can, and we'll let them be asked at the end of each section. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council. Appreciate spending your morning on a Thursday with us today. As it was noted, it's that time of the year again that we start our budget study sessions, the budget review. This is the first of potentially four. We have tentatively scheduled for study sessions, depending on whether we need to have a follow-up at the last study session number four. Before we get started, I wanted to extend my appreciation to the budget team, only two members of the budget team, Shujun Lee, who is our Assistant Director of Finance, as well as Karina Cervantes Vasquez, who is our Budget Manager. Also, a shout-out to Jason Bradford, our former Finance Director, as well as Adrin Sion, our former Assistant Finance Director, who all have played a big role in bringing us here today in the preparation for the budget study sessions. This year, we are doing the study session number one at least slightly differently. We will, at the beginning, have a seven-minute video presentation, Budget 101, if you will, to show how cities primarily budgets work, and with a focus on the city of Glendale. I know you all have been through these sessions for a while and are familiar with the processes, but I think it'll be a good refresher and a very informative, at least to the viewing public. You talked, Mayor, about the three main segments, and I think that's a good strategy, so we don't keep interrupting the presentation. This year, it's no big surprise that we're gonna end the budget with a larger deficit than we had anticipated and forecasted due to a number of reasons, but it's not unique to Glendale. As you've read in the news, the situation, financial situation that the city of Los Angeles is in, as well as county of LA and the cities up and down the state. There are things outside our control to have gotten us to this point in time, this place in our budget, and really reliant on the state of the economy that, again, we cannot precisely predict. We will also show that we are going to have a structural imbalance for the following year, as well as the future years until such time that things change in the economy. For the things that we have control over, I wanted to extend my appreciation again for all the departments who came together and collectively contributed to a significant amount of cost savings that we will present to you, and almost every department had a hand in that. That said, after you see the five-year budget forecast and next year's budget for fiscal year 2526, we will also present you with a list of potential new revenue sources, as well as potential means that we can go ahead and reduce our expenditures further, if that be a direction from council. All that said, I'm going to turn it over to John Tectalian, our Acting Finance Director, who has brought the teams together and will be presenting the items in more detail today for you.
Thank you very much for that introduction, Mr. Golanyan. Today, we're going to be talking about a number of things. I won't go into great detail, because we already described what the budget study session number one is going to consist of, but we do have a couple of other budget study sessions scheduled. The first for May 20th, the next one for June 5th. For May 20th, that's going to be the day that we delve into our departmental presentation. I will say that, considering the fact that this very much is a carryover budget from the last several years, and in many cases, a budget that sees reductions in certain areas, there really isn't anything new or significant that we'll be asking for in the 2526 fiscal year budget. So the departmental presentations may not go in-depth as much as they have in years past. On the 20th, we'll also be looking at the 2526 citywide budget. Today, we're just focusing on the general fund. The citywide will look at all of the other funds, as well as a state-mandated report based on newer legislation from our HR department related to our citywide vacancy rates and its reporting. On June 5th, we'll focus primarily on our capital improvement program, not just this year with the existing projects, but also future years, our fleet operation, as well as parking fees, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Specifically, that'll be a conversation centered around potentially modifying our existing parking rates. June 10th, for now, is saved as a follow-up item. If that date becomes unavailable for any of the councilmembers, considering it's so far out, we may have an opportunity to change it, and that'll be entirely dependent upon whether or not there are any follow-up items with our final budget adoption and hearing being held on June 24th. Before we delve into the presentation, as Mr. Golanyan mentioned, we did something a little bit different this year. We have developed an animated video. It's about seven and a half minutes long. It's really a Budget 101 intended for our community to understand how budgeting in an organization that operates 14 different lines of business actually works. We oftentimes in the community hear that it's a $1.2-plus-billion budget, which is absolutely accurate, but the reality is that much, the vast, vast majority of what we talk about in terms of community priorities, really depend on the general fund, which makes a rather small, represents a rather small percentage of the overall budget. So if I can ask the city clerk to play that video now?
City budgets are really about people and the shared priorities that bring our community together. Every year, we develop a budget through a collaborative process that involves input from every city department. The budget is an evolving document influenced by many economic factors. As the economy changes, sometimes as often as quarterly, we are updated by the revenue consultants who gather data from the California Tax Authority. These updates ensure our budget reflects the most current economic conditions, keeping it flexible and responsive to change. The city's budget process is a year-round effort to plan, authorize, execute, and amend how we allocate resources for essential services. First, we determine the objectives and needs of the organization, evaluating courses of action, and determining the means of attaining these objectives. It identifies the key work activities and projects to be done, and the resources required to achieve them in the upcoming year. Next, we conduct public hearings and final enactment of the budget, which includes the authorization of funds, possible amendments of fees and user charges, and the adoption of necessary resolutions that effectuate the budget's plan. Once the budget is approved, we ensure that plans and programs are accomplished within budgetary limits and are carried out in an effective, efficient, and timely manner. The budget is not a static guideline for city spending, but rather a dynamic document subject to constant scrutiny, revision, and adjustment. The adopted budget may need revision from time to time as new information and actual receipts and expenditures come to fruition during the year. This process ensures that the city's resources are used efficiently and responsibly, supporting the services and programs that make Glendale thrive. The city's budget is organized into different funds, which work like separate buckets to track and balance the money coming in and going out for various city services. As a full-service city, Glendale provides many essential services that residents rely on daily, like road maintenance, police and fire protection, park management, and water service. We pay for these services with a combination of taxes, fees, and other revenue sources. One of our biggest revenue sources is property tax. But did you know that the city only receives 13.5 cents out of every dollar you pay in property taxes? In fact, property taxes cover just a portion of our public safety costs, which include services like police and fire services. The city budget includes six types of funds, each designed for specific purposes and with strict rules about how the money can be used. These funds cannot be mixed together and must follow government accounting standards to ensure proper use. Here's a breakdown. The general fund is the city's main operating fund and has the fewest requirements about how its money is used. It covers services like police patrols, fire response, park maintenance, drawing in new business, maintaining libraries, and planning for livable neighborhoods. Most other funds in the city budget are restricted, meaning they can only be used for their intended purpose. No moving money around to cover different expenses. These restrictions help ensure accountability and build trust, since funds must be spent exactly as the community intended. For example, water fees pay for water infrastructure and treatment. They cannot be used for any unrelated city activities. Special revenue funds represent services funded primarily by other levels of government and not traditionally provided by local government. Most of the federal, state, and county grants that the city receives are accounted for in special revenue funds and must be spent and accounted for according to the specific grant requirements. Enterprise funds are used to account for services that operate on a fee-for-service basis. To accomplish this, the city regularly undertakes a cost-for-service analysis for each service at a minimum of every three to five years to determine the actual costs required to be collected to cover the cost of providing service. This includes essential services like water, electric, sewer, and refuse, where the fees collected help support the infrastructure and operation of those systems. These are regulated by California Proposition 26, which stops the government from introducing additional taxes labeled as fees, and Proposition 218, which protects property owners from surprise taxes and fees by requiring votes or advance notice. Debt service funds are used to account for the accumulation and disbursement of financial resources that will be used to make principal and interest payments on general long-term debt of the city of Glendale. This is similar to paying back a loan over a 30-year amortization period. Glendale has no general obligation debt and one debt service fund, police bonds used for the construction of the current police station. Capital projects funds are used to account for financial resources used for the acquisition, construction, or improvement of major capital assets, like infrastructure or facilities. Due to the size of CIP projects, they are planned and budgeted on a 10-year basis. The current year has $116 million budgeted for CIP, with $324 million identified for the next five years. And internal service funds are established to account for any activity that provides goods or services to other funds and departments within the city of Glendale on a cost reimbursement basis and are intended to be self-supporting. Since these funds derive their resources from the governmental and enterprise budgets, they are already included within the city budget and are presented for informational and memorandum control purposes. Of the city's $1.2 billion budget in fiscal year 2425, the largest portions are allocated to enterprise funds, like water, electric, sewer, and refuse, totaling around $544 million. Special revenue funds, which include Section 8, make up $152 million. The general fund represents only 27% of our total budget, with $326 million, and is split amongst 12 departments, with 64% of that dedicated to public safety services. Creating, adopting, and implementing a city budget is no small task. It takes careful planning, thoughtful consideration, and input from our community. This budget provides a roadmap for the year ahead, guiding how we allocate resources to maintain the services and programs that keep Glendale running smoothly. It's a reflection of our priorities and a commitment to our residents, ensuring we're able to meet both current needs and future growth.
So hopefully...
I think that's a good video. I would even dare say that if we put that on GTV6, I think some of our residents who are interested in the process can see that. In terms of the process, this isn't a question on the merits, but will we be... Well, let me ask Councilmember Asadrian to better clarify the request.
I'm wondering when we're gonna get the larger packet that has the proposed budget and last year's budget, because this is an overview, and it doesn't give me a clear picture of what I'm looking at, how the funds got transferred, where's the larger... When are we getting the larger packet? Because I was expecting that today.
Councilmember Satrian, I don't know if we have a larger packet, but during the presentation, those are the final details that are going to be covered in the slides.
I'm not looking for the slides. I want to be able to look at each of the accounts like we had in previous years and be able to determine what we're talking about here when you're giving... You're giving us the overview today. I'm looking for the details.
So I will say that I don't believe that we have gone into line-item level budgets, probably for the better part of over a decade. If that's the direction of this council, to go into each individual department, to go look at every single fund within each department, and in some cases, say, Public Works, you're looking at upwards of 15 or 20 funds, we can certainly do that. That will be a significant undertaking, and again, something that was not anticipated, considering the fact that this is a carryover budget from previous years.
I'm not looking for that detailed conversation to be had at the sessions. I'm looking for us to have a copy of that, for us to be able to take a look at.
I'd be happy to maybe speak to you a little bit offline, unless you know exactly what it is.
Good and public.
I understand. And then the next sentence I was gonna say is, unless you know exactly what it is you're actually asking for.
So I can give you a copy, I can give you a copy of what I'm asking for from last year, and then I would expect that I can see the details of the overview that you have here.
We can certainly, Councilmember Satrian, give you a copy of the budget book, and then make reference to that as the presentation moves forward into the things that have been adjusted.
Okay, that'd be good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tectalian. Proceed, please.
To your point, Mr. Najarian, this is something that's specifically going to be placed not only on GTV6, but also on the Finance Department's website, and it is intended to be an educational tool. The next couple of slides really are going to be focusing on our resources and our expenditures as of March 31st. This will lead into the next portion of our conversation, which will specifically focus on where we anticipate ending the year for 2425. In terms of resources and expenditures, it's been an exceptionally unique year. Not only do we anticipate a reduction, not just anticipate, but not only are we experiencing a reduction in our resources, but we are identifying some significant increases on the expenditure side, which I'll get into details above. With respect to resources, you'll notice that sales tax has taken a significant hit in this particular fiscal year, and what I'll be referring to is that column headed as adjustments, which is the second column from the, or the third column from the left. Sales tax, primarily, Glendale relies significantly on our auto sector. The auto sector has taken a significant hit in terms of generating sales tax this year in our local economy, so we're seeing a reduction of about $5 million in what we anticipated as revenue. On the utility user tax side, our UUT is something that we charge against our gas, electric, and water video, as well as phone. It's a 7% tax on the first three and a 6.5% tax on the next two. We're experiencing a $520,000 loss in anticipated revenue, and that was specifically from natural gas consumption. This time last year and year prior, we were experiencing some significantly higher rates for natural gas. There were modifications done at that particular utility that lowered those rates, which ultimately resulted in a lower-than-expected or projected UUT. Charges for services, you see a significant decrease, about 2.9, almost $3 million decrease. That particular line item focuses on our tipping fees and our landfill primarily. That 2.9 is almost entirely a reflection of reduction in tonnage being deposited at the Shoal Canyon landfill. With that comes a reduction in the revenue collected into the general fund. And the last item on this particular list of note would be the $500,000 positive revenue for transfer from other funds. That represents our electric transfer. I'll mention this again down the road. We have not changed the actual transfer percentage. That number changes just based on total sales or total revenue that that 10% is charged against. Similarly, on the expenditure side, you'll note some significant changes, which result in about $8.3 million more in expenditures than expected as of March 31st, 2025. Again, that same column, carryovers and adjustments, the third from the left, $75,000 from the city attorney's office associated with legal services agreements. Translation contract in the city clerk's office, there was some funds carried over from the previous year, which have allowed us to have onsite translation, professional translation. For community development, $2.8 million. That's primarily attributed to $1.8 million carryover in economic development funds. These are funds that have been with that department for, gosh, I don't even know how long now, but many, many years dating back a couple of directors, and we carry it over year over year, and the department utilizes it for economic development activities. Another $275,000 was appropriated to community development throughout the year for the East-West Historic Survey, $109,000 for the low-income student program, and about $88,000 in OT for code enforcement, OT standing for overtime, of course.
Can you repeat that number?
$88,000. No, these are my notes.
Mr. Golanyan, I had asked for this last year, and I emailed you about it yesterday as well, saying when you guys are reading off things, it's hard for us to follow through. If we can have a printed copy of what you guys are going through, you guys did that last year.
Councilmember Satrian, I don't recall doing it last year. These are talking points that, depending on who the presenter is.
I'd also emailed you yesterday requesting that we have that. I mean, how are we supposed to follow? You want me to write down every, like, detail he's reading?
I assume we can have the numbers. I don't know how we can do this.
If I could just add a little bit of clarification here. Every one of the numbers that you see on every one of these slides has line item after line item after line item, hundreds of line items associated, ins and outs, increases and decreases. We cannot be expected to go through each of those individual line items as part of discussion. So the focus of this conversation is just to point out the major variations, which is what we've done each and every year, and identify what those are. I will be more than happy to provide you a copy of my entire note packet after this particular meeting.
Okay, and then for the future, can we please get them so we can follow them as he's speaking?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Picking off from where we left off at this point, $64,000 in human resources that was associated with an executive recruiter for conducting our executive recruitments here in the city of Glendale. In the Management Services Department, you see a variation of about $250,000. $197,000 of that associated with the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, that was just a portion of the contract that was funded in that particular fiscal year or carried over, as well as one staff person to oversee the Sister City Program at council's direction. Police has a fairly significant number associated with it. That's the $2 million that you see there. That is entirely attributed to the first partial phase implementation of Project 300 in this fiscal year alone. Public Works, $613,000. Really broken down into two major categories. You'll see about a half a million dollars for citywide traffic study, and $113,000 for weed control services that council approved. And transfer to other funds, this essentially is going to be associated with our different projects. What drove those carryovers or adjustments in this fiscal year were $174,000 for the Pacific Park Playground, $528,000 allocated to the North Brand Demonstration Project, and about $1.4 million in the Locker Center Rehabilitation Project. So when you take the resources and you take the expenditures, we see that we not only have identified $7.5 million in reduction in resources, but we also see about $8.3 million increase in expenditures as of March 31st, 2025. All in all, that leads us to where we believe we're going to end the year. As stated previously, we originally started with an anticipated $330 million budget in our general fund. We've had to adjust our revenues down about $7.5 million based on the sampling of the items that I just shared with council. That brings our revised resources down to $323 million. On the expenditure side, there's about $336 million based on what I just described as well, leaving us with a deficit of about $13.5 million. It would be imprudent, it would have been imprudent upon us, of us, to come to council and ask to adopt this year's, the current 2425 fiscal year's budget, or to close this year's budget with a $13.5 million deficit. The departments have come together over the last three or four weeks and identified a series of reductions to try to balance that budget, leaving us with about a $4.9 million use of fund balance out of the general fund reserve. leaving us with about a $4.9 million use of fund balance out of the general fund reserve. I want to get into, before I get into what some of those cuts looked like, I think it's important for us to understand how we started with a $3.9 million anticipated shortfall for 2425, went to a $13.5 million structural imbalance, and ultimately are proposing ending this year with a projected $4.9 million deficit. The $3.9 million shortfall that I'm referring to was what we identified in December of 2024 as the cost of not only making adjustments throughout the year for various items that weren't originally budgeted for, but also the $2.8 million, I'm sorry, is it $2.8? Project 300? $2 million, and the $2 million for the first partial phase implementation of Project 300. So the point here is, in December of '24, we identified that everything that we were doing, we were going to walk into closing this year with a roughly $4 million deficit, based on our sales tax revenue declining, our utility user tax declining, same with our landfill, an over expenditure in police and fire overtime to the tune of $1.6 million, and about $1 million in costs associated with the windstorm event that took place in January. Note, this is only the general fund portion of that cost. The total cost of that windstorm event was closer to $4.5 million, which we have submitted for reimbursement through FEMA, but we anticipate it'll take about two to three years for us to get that reimbursement. And about $1.5 million in positive revenue, which I can speak to in a moment. We ended up with a $13.5 million structural imbalance. I want to note here that the $1.5 million that we see under the other category really is represented by two items. One is a reduction in carryovers that we had anticipated carrying over or not going to carry over any further. And there's about $850,000 that we were able to secure from Disney corporations, actually Disney companies, to the tune of $850,000. This is a longstanding dispute that Disney has had with the city of Glendale for its communication use tax. We have an ordinance that requires streaming services to pay the communication use tax. We performed an audit a couple of years ago through our auditing firm and identified that Disney had not paid that fee. They appealed it to the tax administrator. They eventually appealed it to the city manager. And in both cases, the decision was upheld that the money was owed. They have since paid us the $850,000 under protest, and we anticipated. They've essentially made indication that they wish to move forward with litigation. So that is just one-time revenue, and depending on how the litigation goes would dictate whether or not that's going to be consistent or not. So from our starting point now of $13.5 million, we've had to make some collective decisions with all the departments to reduce our budget deficit down to 4.9, and we did that in the following ways. We essentially lowered our rate for the workers' compensation fund for the remaining seven pay periods of 2425. The way that that specifically works is when employees are on workers' compensation for an extended period of time, they're no longer drawing their salaries out of the department budget where it was allocated. The workers' compensation fund is essentially paying for it. In this particular fiscal year, and historically, we have had a large number of workers' compensation claims and individuals on disability, on work comp, unable to return to work. Through the efforts of our HR department, our various different departments, specifically police and fire, and our third-party administrator, we've been able to get people back into the office even on light duty much, much sooner than we anticipated. So when we were looking for savings, we essentially looked at the work comp fund and identified that there was $3 million of funding available there through the end of this year that we knew we weren't going to rely upon to pay workers' compensation salaries or claims. It's important to note, however, that that $3 million is just one time, that as of the first pay period in July, we will be contributing back to that fund in order to keep it whole. The next strategy we utilized was suspending our liability insurance deductions. Again, what this means is we suspended depositing money into our liability insurance account after we reviewed and determined that we don't, as of today, have any large pending claims out there. We don't anticipate any claims coming in. Therefore, we felt comfortable taking $2.8 million out of that fund to help balance the general fund. Should we get a large claim, it's very likely that the general fund reserve would have to backfill that, because at the end of the day, this is a zero-sum game. All these strategies that I've described thus far are really just shifting money around. This isn't available funds that have been sitting there. It's just a temporary fix. We reclassified some general fund expenses as well to the tune of about $1 million. What essentially that means is we were able to identify about $1 million worth of expenses in the general fund that could legally be allowed to be charged to funds outside the general fund. Those are more permanent as long as the functions don't change. We reduced our general fund transfer mid-year to the tune of about $1 million. And what that represents essentially is foregoing the floor replacement at the civic auditorium. That was about a $1 million project we had budgeted for a couple of years ago. We had not moved forward with that project for a couple of years. And at this point, we decided to put that on hold in its entirety. And the last portion of the strategies was about an $800,000 savings to the building maintenance and fleet fund. Essentially, we didn't transfer about $800,000 in this year. And I'll talk about that in a little more detail, because this particular strategy extends into '25, '26. That brings our deficit, proposed deficit, I should say proposed, projected deficit, because this could change by year-end, to about $4.9 million. If all the numbers come out to be what they are as of June 30th, essentially, this means that we would be asking council to adopt, to close out the year with a $4.9 million use of our general fund reserve balance. Before I get into the five-year forecast, which is the next portion, this may be a good time to take a pause and see if there are any questions with respect to our current 2425 fiscal year.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Rotman?
Okay. Let's... I don't want to get too into the weeds, but let's go to slide eight. Oh, we're on slide eight, okay. So I know we had, I could see the main categories of revenue shortfalls, the sales tax and the landfill tipping fees. Those were the two biggest. I'm not seeing, you know, in an earlier slide you show that on the expenditure side, we, what was the number? Where we were, I think we had an unanticipated additional expenditure of $8.3 million. Is that right? That I'm getting from slide five. Go to slide five. Just trying to tie some things together. So there at the bottom, the second column, the 8.3. Where does that come into slide eight, the top of slide eight? Because I'm seeing estimated over expenditures, 1.6. Like, for instance, where's Project 300 in that? Go to slide eight now, if you would. Yeah, okay, so I'm talking about going from our 3.9 forecast to our 13.5 initial, that's what you're calling a structural imbalance, right? I see the revenue items, the $5 million and the $3 million. But the rest isn't adding up to that 8-point-something-million dollars. Where is that?
While they're thinking about that, I will say that I think the difference between the two slides is, slide five is looking at the numbers at a specific point in time, which is March 31st, 2025. And that, and the next slide, is looking at it as a projected year-end.
Okay, but we have, for instance, I know you pointed out Project 300. That's about $2 million unanticipated expenditure. And you mentioned, and there were others, right?
There are. There's a lot of netting going on behind the scenes. These are the primary drivers. Right?
So the adjustments to the budget are already included in the 3.9 deficit. So that starting point of 3.9 is already taken into account all of the budget adjustments that we had, which includes Project 300 and any other...
Oh, because we already, those already came before us, and we already approved those.
Correct.
So we made an adjustment earlier in the budget cycle, and that's in that.
Yes.
And then the difference between the 3.9 and 13.5 are things we're basically seeing for the first time. I think some of us are aware of them.
Any loss in revenue or over expenditures that we had.
Okay, that answers that question, because I was struggling to try to tie those together. And then, not so much a question, but a comment, if I might, through my hair. I mean, the way we're taking that structural imbalance of 13.5 to 4.9, I have a lot of problems with doing this, what we're doing. Because essentially, it's a shell game. I know, you know, you'll say there may be some funds that are super-funded and don't need that much money in them, and we can't afford to take money out of them. But in general, what we're doing is, what's the phrase? Stealing from Peter to, robbing Peter to PayPal. Okay. For instance, you mentioned the liability insurance, right? $2.8 million. And you even said, if we get hit by something, we're going to have to dip into the general fund. So I just, in general, I don't like, I think that we need to be honest in our, and I'm not accusing you of dishonesty, okay? I'm using the word honest broadly. But I think we have to be honest and transparent in how we report our deficits. And I think we're kind of playing with the future. We're like saying, well, we'll underfund CIP, and we'll underfund liability insurance, and we'll underfund workers' comp. And we won't put as much into the fleet fund. And I think those are just delaying expenses that are going to occur in future years. I would much prefer to just accept that we have a 13.5 structural deficit. Well, anyway, or something like that, and let that flow through and take that out of the reserve account and not start eating into these other funds. That's just my general philosophy on this.
We understand, Councilmember Rotman. I would clarify, though, through this process, this exercise, we're really not underfunding, but right-funding those two accounts currently. And it's really, it's our responsibility to present to council the efforts that the departments have made in trying to reduce the structural imbalance. In the absence of that, you know, we could be asked to, well, what have you done to reduce cost? So that's the reason why proactively we have made an effort to reduce costs.
But these are not really reducing costs. These are not doing things that we're doing. These are just shifting costs from one bucket to another.
That is correct. And it's a more realistic approach as to what, for example, into the CIP, transfer to CIP that we have reduced. It's a more realistic picture of what the departments can do with the funding they have. So this is, at this juncture anyway, this is not really cutting into what's been programmed and budgeted. We will have to, in the future, look at cutting programs on services. But again, this is to right-size these funds.
Okay, well, in my point.
Right.
Any other questions at this juncture? Mr. Garbich?
Well, I want to go to, not the slide, but this green sheet of paper that says our population.
That is not our presentation. I believe that's from one of the speakers who wishes to speak later. We have not had an opportunity to vet those numbers.
Okay, then, there goes my question. So, no, I have a couple of other questions. The sales tax shortfall that we have on sales tax, this includes the Measure S revenues as well, right?
Yes.
So if we didn't have Measure S, this number would have been much lower this year.
If we didn't have...
Our revenue on sales tax would have been much less than what it is today.
Well, yes.
And also, there were some increases by the state on the sales tax. It went up to 11%, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And considering all of that, we still have a shortfall of $5 million on our sales tax?
Yes, I will just point out that the increase in the sales tax in LA County did not hit prior to March 31st. Or if it did, it would have had a very, very small impact. But to answer the first part of your question, if we didn't have Measure S as part of the general fund, that $13.5 million would have been in excess of $30 million more. So we would have been looking at a $43.5 million shortfall.
I just want the community to understand how the numbers work, because if we didn't have the Measure S, it would have been $43 million. And the landfill, what was our highest amount that we generated from the landfill? Is it $6 to $8 million, $9 million a year?
It's about $9 million, yeah.
So this year is how much? You anticipate six, so it's $3 million. And in the future, when the landfill goes away, you're going to have another $9 million deficit on top of that. Loss of revenue on top of that.
We have, yes. Actually, the next portion of this conversation will focus on our five-year forecast, and we'll show that in a couple of different ways. We've already programmed in the loss of the revenue from the landfill in the final year of the five-year forecast, which at this point is the year that we anticipate the landfill's closure based on the amount of tonnage being deposited at the facility.
Okay. Well, we're facing tough times. I think we just have to tighten our belts and stop funding some of the projects that are really not necessary. So, okay, that's all I have, Mr. Rotman.
Okay, let's...
Keep going. Very good. So the next section will look at our five-year forecasts cut two different ways. I think to Mr. Councilmember Rotman's point, we've made an effort to take feedback that we received in some of the briefings and show the information in a, I don't want to use the term "true light", but as it fully represents the current situation, as well as the next slide, which will actually show what it looks like after we've implemented some of the maneuvers to help mitigate the overall impact of the budget shortfalls in fiscal year '24, '25, and '25, '26. For all intents and purposes, there's no beating around the bush. I'm not going to hide behind the fact that we are not structurally imbalanced as of today. No matter how you look at it, you look at the numbers in red right there, where it refers to the addition or use of an assigned fund balance. And in '24, '25, we absolutely are $13.5 million upside down from where we thought we were last year. That number jumps to $34.5 million in '25, '26, absent any budget strategies to reduce that number. We will talk about that in more detail in the second portion of this presentation. But if you keep looking into fiscal years '26, '27, all the way to '29, '30, that $34 million doesn't really change. We're hovering around a $35 million structural imbalance. It's not just an expenditure issue, and it certainly isn't just a revenue issue. I will make it very clear, there's no doubt about it. You will not dig yourself, we will not dig ourselves out of this with cuts along. We absolutely need to work on the revenue piece as well, because the expenses, just based on our revenue source portfolio, what we're reliant upon out there to help fund our programs and services via, for example, sales tax, which is really dependent on auto sales, just doesn't come close to covering our ongoing natural increases in expenses. Another important line to focus on on this particular chart, which is different from previous years... previous years, I don't think we've ever really shown this piece. We always talk about our reserve policy being the city council's reserve policy. 25% floor, 35% target has been the city council's policy. There's been discussions about reducing that, that, that policy percentages in the past, but that hasn't come to fruition to date. But there is another piece of our charter that requires us to go much deeper. Our true minimum reserve balance in the city's charter is no less than 50% of property tax revenue for any particular fiscal year. So if you look at that last item, the last row, projected charter reserve requirement, you'll see that in fiscal year proposed '25, '26, we have to have a minimum of $44 million. If we don't do anything to balance the budget or mitigate the, the budget imbalance, we will go down from our current 139, I want to say, down to about $80 million. The worrisome part is, absent any mitigation, we get extremely close in, in fiscal year '26, '27 to equalizing what our minimum balance requirement is in the charter to what we actually have. And we immediately go upside down in '27, '28. This is just one way of looking at the budget, absent any mitigation solutions. This slide, however, takes a different approach. What this slide is looking at is what we've essentially talked about with respect to '24, '25. The surpluses and deficits in the first row of red lines doesn't change. We still have the $13.5 million imbalance this year, and the 30, projected $34 million imbalance next year, again, which we'll talk about in detail. But we are proposing about 8.6 million in budget balancing strategies in '24, '25, about 20.6 million in '25, '26, thereby only using 4.9 and 13.9 million of our general fund reserve balance. Again, the projected charter reserve requirement, the last row, doesn't change. But even with these mitigation measures, if we just did the things that we're going to talk about today, we begin to almost get to our lowest limit of our charter in '27, '28, and we go well beyond that by '28, '29. And at that point, you're essentially out of money. So something needs to happen in this particular fiscal year. And if we do decide to adopt with a $13.9 million deficit, we most certainly have to look for ways to work towards balancing our budgets in the future years. Any questions on the five-year forecast that I can help?
Yes, Councilmember Satrian.
So this is my third budget session, and I said this last year and the year before. You, when you go back and you look, you look at the projections provided, year after year, they actually don't match up. Going back 10 years, you know, always looks okay next year, and then it's like doomsday coming. I actually think that, you know, I know that we're going to go through the slides, and then there's, again, once again, being proposed, you know, some new taxing options. I really think this whole thing is kind of built backwards, in the sense that you are continuously talking about cuts, and I'm coming from a place of, okay, well, this is how much money we need. What do we need to do to generate more revenue? Right? And so it's, I think, the easiest thing to do, and I said the same thing last year, is like, okay, well, let's start slashing things left and right, which I think creates instability in our institution, versus saying, here are all the things that, aside from taxes, here are all the things that were on the list of this council's supposed to look at as revenue generating sources, and making those a priority on the council agenda, right? And so if it means that, I don't know, CDD has like 10 things on their list, maybe you put away all the other things that are feel-good right now, and have them work on bringing to council their revenue sources. If we're in this state right now, I think that, I'm, I'm not interested in this, well, let's cut here, let's cut there, or, you know, you're calling it balancing. I'm, I'm seeing it as cuts. And whether it's this council or our community, we have a set expectation when it comes to public safety, we have the same expectation, those expectations aren't going to change. So I think our responsibility has to be not just looking at where the shortfalls are, but making the revenue sources a priority, and just kind of working, you know, just kind of flipping what conversations we're having. So I would have loved to seen not just the tax measures you're proposing today on this document, but the long list of items that are in each of the departments that could be producing revenue, right? So I'm hoping that that's next session, right? But as we're having this conversation, that should have been part of the list, and at least where I'm coming from, you know, that, that's kind of the conversation I would love to have as a team. I mean, we can all say like doomsday, it's, you know, our financials look awful and all of this, but, you know, what are we doing as a council to make sure we're not there and not just look at cuts?
Councilmember Satrian, that valid points you made. The balancing strategy, budget balancing strategy, will have to involve both reducing expenditures and increasing revenues. And, and you will see, we will have a conversation later on today and during the departmental presentations. But there is, there isn't a, a long exhaustive list of potential revenue sources that are guaranteed. But we do have a list, and we will seek direction from council. We have come to council previously. We did have a conversation, if you recall, probably less than maybe 10, 10 items, almost a dozen items. But none of them, almost none of those items got unanimous council agreement and concurrence and direction. But we will bring those up again. But I, I will have to reiterate that the process, the exercise, has to be, if possible, reducing expenditures, in the meantime, looking into potential revenue generating sources. But that will, we will have that conversation.
And I, and I just want to add, I, I agree with you. And at no point in time have, that I today or ever say that we need to cut our way out of this. In fact, I said, we cannot cut our way out of this. This really has to be a combination of some long-term stabilization of our expenses, but we absolutely need to focus on the revenue side. This community has come to expect a certain product from this organization, from, from this city. And it's, unless we're fundamentally talking about changing that, and I have not heard that up at this dais at this point, it has to happen on the revenue side.
And when I say that, I want to see the details. And the reason I say that as an example, I think some of that, we've had recent conversations about how we're financing the bigger projects, right? And so if, say, the beautification project for Artsakh Street is going to cost us, I don't know, $8 million, and it's in your budget right now, I want to be able to take a look at that and say, well, you know, do we put, put that on pause? Or do we, you know, find financing so you're not, as a number, you're not putting that in the budget as an $8 million item, but you're kind of extending how much we're paying each year, which opens up the doors for us, right? So that is the reason that, you know, I know you had a particular look on your face when I said it, but it's, I'm trying to see where the details are as a council for us to be able to say, okay, well, here are some projects that were like really feel-good projects, and I'd rather put those on pause and make sure that we have our planners for permits, and we have our police officers for safety, and our fires covered. I mean, these are, these are the beats of the conversations that I won't be able to have with, with an overview sheet like this. So I'm trying to explain where I'm coming from on it. This isn't me like, hey, I'm going to go dig and see like what you guys are.
Completely understand, Councilmember Satrian. Actually, Mr. Bradford just texted me. I, we weren't quite sure what you were referring to, but last year he had shared a spreadsheet, Excel spreadsheet that, so that's what you're referring to, will get that to all the council members. But to your point, that's exactly the exercise we're going to go through. Is this an overview? Absolutely. Wanted to give you a 30,000-foot view of where we stand, but we will have those detailed conversations later today and in, in the future study sessions. But one thing I want to note, when a project is budgeted, we have to account for it, put it in the budget. We cannot put a number in there for potential revenue, alternative revenues, unless that have been vetted and approved and it's guaranteed. So that's, that's the reason why there is that imbalance. But again, we'll have that conversation. There are projects that we could potentially put on hold until such time that we can find alternative sources of revenue.
I'm going to look at the rest of my comments.
Yeah, let's, let's go through the slides. Yeah. I think to just follow up what Councilmember Satrian was saying, there are projects that we have done that was unnecessary or not needed. There are consulting fees that we paid that, I think, they were noted and filed. There are so many, so many different options that we have, and I think that's something that we need to look into. I, I have a list of, you know, I, I went back and looked at so many council meetings to find out how much consulting fees we paid for, I don't know, climate adaptation action plans, $530,000, $40,000, and so on and so forth. It was like $4 million of consulting fees. The Artsakh Street project, $8 million. If we take that out, let's say the council decides, says, we don't want to do it this year, we may do it next year. What kind of a difference would that make on our, on our numbers here today? And there are so many other things that we need to look into, because when we talk about, that's why I wanted to get a clarification, every department will have a revenue source. These departments, they're not in the, they're not a business, basically, like Water and Power or, or CDD, their, their source of revenue is what we charge the residents. So if we want to increase those, we have to increase the rates or fees or planning fees or plan check fees or utility fees in order for these departments to make more, generate more revenue. So I don't know if you want to go, I, I think this is a good idea to, to look into the details of the projects that we have done, and was not necessary. Like planting a tree costs us $1,000 a tree, which is a big number. But I don't know, instead of Bramble War Demonstration Project, we could have planted 2,000 trees. We spent $2 million there. We could have, we have to, we have to look at it as our own family budget. When, when they're talking about cuts, they're talking about narrowing it down. Like, I looked at all of my insurances and made adjustments to lower my costs. Not that I don't have an insurance, but I understand sometimes what they're saying when they make adjustments to lower the costs. I think that's, that's important to do. But I agree, I think we, there are projects that not necessary, that we can, we can put on hold and move from there. I know we don't, we have a long, long session, so I'm going to stop right here.
If I can just chime in real quickly and make some clarifications here. I want to make it clear that today, we're talking about year-end close for '24, '25, a five-year forecast that includes a, a proposed '25, '26 budget. That's just today's conversation. What Councilmember Satrian was asking for is absolutely coming back as part of our June 5th conversation when we talk about CIP. Those projects, whether it's the Brand, the North Brand project, Locker Center project that's funded out of the general fund, the Artsakh Paseo, which is funded out of the, the general fund, perhaps even the Central Park project, those are all items that we will bring back. What we're proposing as a proposed budget is merely the starting point. The details are going to come in the following two study sessions, where council will have an opportunity to discuss, debate, add, remove, modify, before we bring back a final proposed budget contingent upon the direction that this council gives us over the next month. I just wanted to go back and kind of reset those expectations.
And later on, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Nagerian, later on, in the slides, you will see strategies that will speak to, to both of the comments that council members have, have made. And we fully anticipate going through that exercise, as you noted.
Thank you. Mr. Bratman, did you have any questions on this?
I have, I have comments and thoughts about this conversation, but I think let's move on, and I can bring those in later.
Okay.
I can just request one additional. I think when we're talking about this year's budget and closing out, I want to see the sheet of how things got, what got moved around to what, to close the gap is what I'm looking for. So, because at the end of the day, we have to be the ones to accept that.
Okay. We'll get that to council.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to the next phase.
So the next phase is what I just referenced, which is the proposed budget, the first draft of the '25, '26 proposed budget, based on the resources and the appropriations that we know as of today. Again, this is a projection. The projection is based not on a, it's really a scientific guess with the help of our outside consultants, who do this for all of the other agencies in and around this area, if not the entire state of California. The, the column on this particular page that I wanted to, to focus on would be the second to last on the right, the one that references the increases and decreases, because that's the one that really focuses on the large variations. We anticipate, in terms of resources, $3.9 million more in property tax in the next fiscal year, based on just natural growth. But based on what sales tax is doing, we do, all indication is that there will be a, a turn in that particular line item to the tune of about $4.3 million, give or take. Something to note, that's really important, what we're seeing, just not in the city of Glendale, but across this particular state, and perhaps the nation, I could, if I could only speak to the state, is that in terms of sales tax, most cities in this, in, in our vicinity seem to have peaked in the, the fourth quarter of 2023, which was really the heat of COVID. Towards the tail end, but that's when stimulus checks were still flowing. Once those stopped flowing, we saw two things occur. One, lowered sales tax. Two, we actually began to see a decline in our tipping fees at the landfill. People weren't constructing as much, people weren't, you know, replacing their, their, home items, or their home goods as frequently. That has continued on a, on a steady downward trend. So it's not that there's some catastrophe with sales tax. It, it, it seems, all indication is this may be more of a correction from where we were and had a, perhaps a false sense of, of reality a couple of years ago. But again, in Glendale, the one that gets, takes the, the primary hit is, on the sales tax side, is going to continue to be the auto sector, because that, that is the area that we're highly reliant upon. Another interesting note on this one, our sales tax and property tax are our strongest, highest revenue earners in the city. For the longest time, sales tax was higher than property tax. It's, it's finally began to flip this year. We'd love for that competition to continue in an upward trajectory, but we'll have to wait to see what happens in future years. On licenses and permits, we're seeing about a $2, $2.1 million reduction in anticipated revenue. In the first nine months of this current year, we're seeing less permits being pulled. And the 2.9 million, the 2.1 million reduction comes after we implemented the most recent fees, the fee update last fiscal year. Charges for services, again, as I mentioned in the '24, '25 slides, this one is primarily being driven by the landfill. We anticipate a loss of revenue from that particular facility of about $3.7 million. Interest, use of money, that's essentially the interest that is earned by our city treasurer in the portfolio. We've gotten indication from him that we can anticipate the return, or we should anticipate using a two and a quarter rate as opposed to a 3% rate, which was what was in our previous projections, just based on what the market is doing and what returns we're actually realizing. So about a $560,000 loss there. And then transfer from other funds, we anticipate that if revenues remain where they are, We anticipate that if revenues remain where they are and potentially increase just based on usage, that we may be able to appropriate or will be able to collect an additional $3.6 million in our -- from our electric fund transfer. Again, that does not change the percentage rate that we charge to the transfer. It's just merely based on the fact that the revenue base is at a higher level. The two, it's really one, the one additional item I want to focus on here is going to be the last two rows, where we talk about assigned fund balance and assigned fund resources. This particular year, we had to make a decision to, I'm sorry, I said assigned parking fund resources, I meant parking fund resources. So the rest of this conversation will make more sense. This particular year, as we do each year, as we're planning for the budget, we go through all of our different internal service funds, and we do two things. We determine whether or not the rates that are being charged to those internal service funds are appropriate. The purpose is not to ever be super funded in an internal service fund. It's not even to be 100% funded necessarily in an internal service fund. You just need to meet your obligations in a reasonable manner. There are times where we have to increase those rates, there are times where we decrease those rates, and we took that opportunity this year, as we talked about earlier, with the workers' compensation and liability to adjust. But we do have one fund, it was a special revenue fund, which is our parking fund. That fund has been a standalone special revenue account for many, many years and really served, to break it down, really served two purposes. Part of it, you can look at it as managing, maintaining, paying for our parking lots and our parking structures, as well as the vendor contract associated with it. Another portion of it focused on our parking enforcement efforts. We have two sets of vendors, one on the parking side, parking lot side, L A Z, I believe, is the vendor that manages our lots. And on the parking citation side, we have SP Plus managing our parking citation enforcement. To make a long story short, we looked at this fund historically, and when we began to break it down, it's become abundantly clear that year over year consistently, the fund has been operating in the negative. And when a special revenue fund continues to operate in a negative status year over year, the general fund reserve is essentially the fund that has to offset those negatives by stepping in and making the fund whole. At this point, it makes no sense to maintain a separate parking fund. So a decision was made to fold it or collapse it into the general fund, which is why in the next slide, we're going to see some pretty significant increases in salaries or M&amp;O in the general fund. But I want to just note now that we, when we look at our presentations next week and the following week, when we do talk about our other internal service funds, special revenue funds and such, we will see a commensurate decrease in salaries and M&amp;O in another part of our organization. So literally, just picture this as moving money from one side to the other. It just so happens to be coming out of the special revenue fund and being deposited into the general fund. Any questions on that? No? All right. So we just finished talking about resources. We have to talk about our expenditures as well. This is what I was referring to. That first line item refers to salaries and benefits, about $29.6 million increase over '24-'25. I want to make this very clear. This is not an additional $30 million for the same exact salaries and benefits or employees that were in the general fund this time last year. This represents the netting of the ins and outs, as I was mentioning earlier, of collapsing the parking fund into this fund. But there is some associated salary costs as well. So I'll try to break this $29 million down because I know inquisitive minds want to know. $4.1 million was associated with salaries and benefits associated with the parking fund. $2.1 million was a hit for cost of living adjustments for the fire department. And there was a $15.6 million cost associated with the police department that included not just cost of living adjustments, it included Project 300, but it also included overtime expenses. And I will expand on this overtime issue in a little bit. There is a backstory to that. It's just showing up now in a clear way, but the police department is actually committed to reducing the overtime from what it is, what it has been over the last couple of years to something that we can actually afford.
What was the four?
The $4.1 million was the parking fund collapsing into the general fund.
And then, sorry, just the third number that you mentioned for police, what was that number?
$15.6.
Well, he's going to send them.
$15.6.
Yes, we will share those numbers for the council.
There's also the impact of our, the filling of our vacant positions. Little backstory on this one. Last year, if you recall, we adopted our budget with a $9.6 million worth of vacancy savings. I recall commenting on a couple of occasions that even if we were to eliminate all of those vacant positions out of the city budget at that time, that we wouldn't see the actual numbers change on the screen. We wouldn't save any additional money. That was because we essentially had said, "We're going to keep these positions in the budget, but the way we're going to close the $9.6 million gap is by maintaining $9.6 million in vacant positions." That was just a commitment that was made. However, throughout the year, things changed. There was a significant effort by the HR department, as we've noted in these conversations previously, to fill those vacant positions. For once in, gosh, probably in the amount of time that I've been in this organization over two decades, the police department is nearly entirely fully staffed. And if they don't have bodies in those positions, those people are either currently going through backgrounds as lateral transfers from other agencies, or they're in the academy as we speak. That is, that pattern has actually been replicated in a number of other departments. We received direction from this council in terms of moving forward and filling those vacancies. And some of those vacant positions, about $7.7 million worth, actually got filled. So we didn't realize those savings. That has a direct impact on our present situation and our situation moving forward. But as I also mentioned last year, what we propose is truly a reflection of the true cost of doing business the way we know it. These are not ancillary, auxiliary, additional positions that are nice to haves. These are the minimum levels of staffing we need to manage the 14 different operations that we have in this organization. Moving on to the maintenance and operation piece, about $9.9 million in expenditures above last year. 8.8 of that, however, completely attributed to the collapsing of the parking fund into the general fund. As I mentioned earlier, you'll see a commensurate $8.8 million reduction in our special revenue bucket, if you will, because the funds just got transferred here. $2.6 million in IT charges. What that represents is projects that were paid for and completed two years ago. Our internal IT rate allocation operates in two years in arrears, just like our citywide cost allocation plan. This is just the way the cost allocation plans operate. So what we're essentially doing is now realizing the true cost of what we performed two years ago. And just like we're doing, we continue to do things in IT presently, those costs will be realized in budgets two years from now. Finally, transfer to other funds. This is the piece that I think speaks to Councilmember Sotirian's comments earlier in terms of wanting to see CIP projects and such. I think that what you're referring to is existing projects. Again, we'll talk about that two budget study sessions from now. However, the way that we got to $12.8 million reduction in transfers to other funds was by not transferring $10 million to the CIP, which is something that we implemented as a strategy to finally get the CIP, our capital improvement program, up and running again after many years of it being on life support. We aren't transferring $2 million to the fleet fund, and we are not transferring $800,000 to the building maintenance fund. With respect to those two, we feel that, looking at the fleet fund, while we have that fund in a good position, the only way we're able to afford a one-time deferral of the $2 million that we've committed to annually is because what we're experiencing is the lead time between the time we order a vehicle to the time that it actually gets delivered is over a year. So at this point, we've identified about $2 million worth of float, if you will, where we feel we maintain a healthy fund, we don't impact our operations, we don't slow down necessarily on our electrification efforts, but we use this one-time opportunity to help plug the budget deficit for '25-'26. Same with the building maintenance fund into the tune of $800,000. So at this point, some might be wondering, how in the world did we get from a $3.4 million anticipated use of fund balance as we entered this effort to a structural imbalance of $34.5 million? We talked about this in the previous slides, so I won't necessarily go into a great level of detail, but you'll see that sales tax revenue, UUT, building permit revenue, the landfill, and a number of other items add up very, very quickly. So our new starting point, absent any budget balancing strategies, is about $34.5 million. We're almost ready for a break for questions. More slides?
If you're ready for questions?
Sure.
Councilmember Sotirian.
Estimated vacancy savings on the slide. Are you talking about current vacancies that we have, or are you talking about a hiring freeze?
Neither. So what this represents is what I was describing earlier with respect to vacancies. Last year, we anticipated maintaining $9.6 million in vacancies, but we filled $7.4 million in vacancies. This here represents the cost or the increased expenditure from where we started last year. So at this point, we've abandoned that strategy altogether because we can't rely on vacancy savings any longer. We're nearly fully staffed in our general fund operations. When we make the presentation next week, when Paul Adams makes the presentation next week, we'll see that our overall vacancy rate, I believe, I don't want to quote numbers, but it's probably hovering about 10%, if not less, in the general fund. I'm getting a nod yes. That is what you can typically expect in an organization our size.
Okay, so you do have a hiring freeze in place right now, do you know?
Correct, and I will talk about the, some of the strategies in a minute.
But when you, so I'm going to give an example, I'm going to pick libraries, because I -- if there are staff on there right now, say, the library director knows they're going to retire in the next year or two years, right? Or within the end of this year, and you have a hiring freeze, this council is under the impression that that staff member is continuing to do the work while you have a hiring freeze. And with your system, that position would not be filled, correct?
What system are we referring to?
So if you have a hiring freeze, someone is on their way out from a department, that means that in the future, you're not going to be filling that position, correct?
Not necessarily, and I haven't really talked about where we stand currently, so I'm not sure where this, what we're referring to. One of the strategies that we've implemented for the '25-'26 fiscal year is a pause. So you're right, there is a hiring freeze in place that we implemented until we get further direction from council on how we want to move forward, how we're going to move forward and address this challenge.
And the hiring freeze currently in place is for vacant positions that we have, not necessarily someone who is already in a position and will be leaving that position. We'll have to approach this on a case-by-case basis. If the library director comes to me and makes a case that we need to backfill that position, then I'll approve it.
We have not made a decision or to, essentially, reduce our staffing via attrition at this point. I think that's what you're talking about. If somebody would retire, a hard no on filling that position isn't the situation. What we have said, however, is that it will be on a case-by-case basis, and it would have to review by both, by all three sections, actually, the city manager, the finance director, from a financial perspective, to see if in fact the department does have savings or can sustain itself, as well as from HR.
And how do council priorities come into play with that decision?
That is all part of what we're discussing as part of this.
No, as in like your decision to fill that or not, is that based on council priorities as well? Do you take that into consideration, or are you?
That will be a component of the consideration, yes. And we'll get to council's priorities and moving forward, what we need to focus on.
And then, I think, when we're talking about vacancies or hiring freeze, is it across the board on all departments? Or, because I remember last time, and I don't know where we're at, but like Glendale Water and Power had crazy, like 70 vacancies a while back, so I don't know where we're at with that.
So the hiring freeze is primarily for vacant positions in the general fund. GWP, most, if not all of their funds is special fund and...
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, I think so. Okay, so in terms of the, we're making a set of assumptions about our revenues for next year, and I know we get those from our consultant, H D L L, okay? And I brought this up in a briefing yesterday, but I would like to understand more about what position they're taking as far as pending recession tariffs. I mean, it's very hard right now, there are all these uncertainties. So one of the things that I think, that I worry about and we probably all worry about is, is this a rosy scenario situation for revenues next year? Is this a doom and gloom situation? Is this somewhere in between? I'd like to be able to gauge. Personally, I tend to, I don't want to be too doom and gloom, but I tend to want to err on the side of doom and gloom, especially because we don't know. There's so much uncertainty, right? We're hearing rumblings about even perhaps not maybe this fiscal year, but next, losing Section 8 funding or part of Section 8 funding, which obviously we wouldn't ever be able to plug.
Correct.
But I want a better sense of what are the assumptions being made and how those kind of compare to the consensus that's out in the marketplace. So, you know, I'm not expecting an answer now, but if you can provide that.
Sure.
Something I think we should be thinking about. And then, the other thing is, again, like I was saying, for what we're doing to kind of reduce the deficit for this current fiscal year, when we're looking out for next fiscal year, it worries me a lot to see that we're pulling, you know, $10 million out of what we would otherwise be contributing to CIP. And I want to make sure that we're not deferring maintenance, for instance, on roads, like our road condition index, that that's not going to be, we're not going to be deferring things that we've already committed to doing to maintain the condition of our roads because we know that that just means we're digging a bigger and bigger hole and we're going to have to fill that sometime in the future, and it's going to cost more in the future if we don't repair those roadways now. So those are some of the things I really worry about then. I would like, you know, not, I don't expect an answer right now, but to understand how not putting $10 million into CIP will affect what we would be doing next how not putting $10 million into CIP will affect what we would be doing next year, you know, the projects that we are not going to be doing because of that.
Completely understood, Councilmember Brownman, and we do share the same concerns. As far as roadway improvements and repaving are concerned, as you know, we have other sources of grants and measures that, for example, gas tax, as well as Measure W for storm-water-related projects. But you're absolutely correct. I mean, the situation we're in and the absence of infusion of some significant revenue into our budget, those kinds of operations and efforts will be impacted.
I think that just leads me to, where are we at with the finance director position?
The finance director position, we went through a second set of interviews. The first set did not culminate in a, a good candidate that I could pick from, but I'm actually interviewing a person this afternoon, as a matter of fact, one of the finalists, the candidates for the position.
I think that one of the things that, again, we need to look at, making sure that person has is the technical abilities for financing and forecasting. I know that we haven't done that as a city in the past, but having somebody with skillsets to be able to look at different financing opportunities and revenue generating, those are technical skills that none of us up here have.
Yes. For that particular reason, Councilmember Satyam, we have hired a revenue manager who's sitting the front row, and her primary, one of her primary responsibilities is going to be looking into potential revenue sources.
And structuring, finance, finance structuring, as we're talking about forecasting?
You mean borrowing?
Borrowing, loans, how we structure these projects, where we, because even when, you know, Mr. Brown is talking about deferred maintenance or we don't do that, right? We also recognize that if we defer that maintenance, something that could be like $5 million or $8 million this year can be $10 or $15 million, you know, down the line. And so we would actually be wasting money if we held up. So just, just looking for, you know, whoever comes on board and whatever team we're building is actually looking at those details. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Let's keep going.
Very good. So the next slide, essentially, and I'll fly through this because I think we get, we all understand how we're kind of going through these different variations of how to look at it. But this is essentially a reference to how we close that gap. We start with a $34.5 million imbalance, and then there's a number of things that we put on this list, to Mr. Brownman's point, the transfer of the CIP, the major items that we took off that list for next year or deferred, actually it was both. So we deleted the Fairmont Building renovation that we had planned for, and then we deferred a number of things in community services and park projects, the first being the Verdugo Park South renovation, the Shoal Canyon Ball Field parking lot renovation or repavement, the Shoal Canyon landfill master planning effort for when the landfill ultimately closes in '29 and turns into open space, that's something we've deferred to a future year, upper shoal demolition and renovation project, and some street repaving projects. Not to say that street repaving projects will not continue, a lot of those actually get paid out of different funds like state gas tax. In terms of department reductions, series of examples where departments were able to put forward some level of reduction, we, one of the things that we did kind of as an across-the-board for all general fund departments was eliminate the flat adjustment that we've done for the last couple of years. I've mentioned a couple of times today that we've essentially been carrying over a budget year over year for the last couple of years with, but what we did was we provided departments a flat adjustment of $50,000, $100,000, $150,000, depending on the size of the department. So smaller departments got 50, larger departments like police and fire probably just got like $150,000. This year, based on where we're at, we've essentially discontinued that practice, which netted about $1.6 million in savings. The fire department was able to determine that instead of annual cancer screenings, it would be appropriate to do it on an every-other-year basis, that's about $110,000. Police department reduced a DNA contract for about $60,000. The HR department eliminated an investigator position, those responsibilities will now be transferred over to the legal department to pursue. Library reduced their community relations contract by $105,000. City manager's office, $90,000 reduction in legislative advocacy initiatives, and Public Works reduced their West Coast Arborist contract by about 200, bringing us down to the $13.9 million deficit that we have been talking about. That would be an appropriate time to pause and take any additional comments with respect to the proposed '25, '26 general fund budget.
I have a question. Can you please tell us, John, where we are with the transfer to the general fund from the GWP?
Sure. We have not changed the actual percentage that we transfer. We transfer about 10% of all surplus revenues from the electric fund to the general fund. There is opportunity, and we'll talk about that in a couple of slides, as one of the potential enhancement options to increase that transfer, but that would be a conversation for council to have and direction for us to receive.
Okay. And then just to, I mean, just to clarify, on your five-year forecast?
Yes.
Because we haven't taken any of those policy issues, either on the revenue or the expense side, you can't assume that we're going to do anything. I mean, you are just, everything being equal, this is how the outlook is going to be.
Yes.
So although it may look like gloom and doom, there are adjustments we can make, but we don't know what those adjustments are. Clearly, we are going to make adjustments. We're not going to continue with that huge several of tens-million-dollar deficit as we go forward.
Absolutely. The intent of showing that is to depict the actual structural imbalance that we have, and that really is a target to work towards. We have a $35 million target to work towards, whether it's by some level of cuts and a lot of additional revenue.
Does, I'm thinking of Santa Clarita, does annexation of additional communities result in a net gain for our budget or is it a net drain?
It depends, right? If the area is primarily residential, we will benefit from property tax, but that also will require providing services to that community, right? But if the base is primarily industrial, commercial, then by all means, it's gonna, we're going to benefit from sales tax.
I thought you were talking about Canada.
No, I'm talking about other areas that, you know, I've heard from others, both residential and business, to the north, you know, gee, I wish we were part of Glendale. Not everyone says that. Some have the exact opposite. They want to secede from Glendale, the actual incorporated areas, but what is the, is that something that's just too big of a headache to even consider?
Too, it's a huge process, convoluted, complex, you have to go through LAFCO and...
Santa Clarita does that almost every five years. They continue to grow, they continue to expand. Apparently, their general fund and their budget issues are a much better situation than we are.
Yes, they are.
And that may be due to several different reasons, but that's just a thought that...
Absolutely. That's, that's how they became the third-largest city in LA County overnight. They surpassed Glendale because they took over Valencia, but that was a different situation. Valencia was situated smack in the middle of Santa Clarita. But again, I would welcome the concept of annexation if it generates decent sales tax. By the same token, like I said, we have to provide services that we currently don't, police and fire, et cetera.
Throw that a wild pitch out there. Questions at this point? Mr. Carpitian?
Yeah. Mr. Taktalian, you mentioned Shoal Canyon parking lot and the plans for upcoming closure of the landfill. We are putting those on the site at this time. These projects, could they be funded by, in the future, I'm not saying just this year, with parks development impact fees, or they have to be new projects for DIF funds from the parks? Because Shoal Canyon, the parking lot is part of that park, right?
That, that particular project, Councilmember Carpitian, is repaving the parking lot.
Right.
So it's really not a new parks amenity.
Okay. So it has to be a new project in order for us to use the DIF?
Correct. And that, that can be deferred, it's not in a state that has to be repaved today or this year. So checking with staff, we've just deferred it.
Okay. Can we, do we have the discretion on council to extend the life of Shoal or have legal documents with county sanitation been placed? I mean, it was a, it was an ordinance.
It was a resolution.
A resolution.
Correct.
And we've changed our resolutions before on council.
Correct.
Well, that's possibly council-willing, an option?
Correct, Mayor, that's an option. Again, the anticipated closure is in 2029, so it will not have, if the, there's a change in resolution, it will not have an immediate impact this year or next year, even the following year. But the closure is predicated on reaching capacity at the landfill as far as the sand district is concerned.
Okay, Mr. Taktalian, do you want to get into some of these?
Yeah, we...
...balancing strategies?
Sure. Before we get into that, I believe, I was asked to put together a slide to reference the number of different council requests that had come in over the last fiscal year, and staff had committed to bringing these conversations or these topics back during our budget study session to seek from council instruction on whether we want to investigate any of these any further and bring them back with much more detail in terms of costs, impacts, and such. I, I don't know if you want me to go through each and every one of these bullet points, I think it's on the screen and, you know, council members can, can see it, but just by way of example, few items representative of the types of requests that were submitted was programs to assist small businesses, residential rent relief program implementation, partnership with special event organizers, potentially expanding our library teen space, additional funding for enforcement for things like leaf blowers, street vending, Airbnb, noise ordinance, expansion of our existing AGSA contract in the spirit of sustainability, as well as the implementation or establishment of a Department of Transportation. I did not share the full exhaustive list for obvious reasons, but at the end of today's conversation, we would like to receive some feedback on whether or not we're being expected to come back with some additional information on any of these.
Do any of these have positive revenue impacts associated? Or is it all just a drain?
These are, Mayor Nagerian, primarily expenditures. One thing that I see as potential is the misdemeanor prosecution, but I defer to Mr. Garcia for that. Now, these are, these are resources that we need to provide, yeah.
Councilmember Astutian?
So I, I would definitely say that, as it is for me, I think it's too early for me to have this conversation on, on these. I would like for us to take a look at all the other adjustments you have made and what our full picture looks like in order for us to even have this discussion because, again, these requests are like very handpicked and I don't know, you know, I'd like to see the larger picture before we move forward with any conversation on these. And, you know, if it would help staff, we can do that if you're able to send that larger document and then, you know, have this be part of the next session's conversation. I think it was, you know, I mean, it's good for us to see it now, but it's the first time we're seeing it, and I don't feel comfortable having a conversation off the cuff of, you know, just some items that are placed on there without looking at the bigger picture. I think same applies for the balancing strategies. I'd like for us to digest that, looking at the overall picture before.
Okay, and that goes without saying, I mean, anything, anything on this list, the cut list or the revenue list, we can bring back and discuss.
Absolutely.
At any time, especially when we're getting into the detailed of the budgets. Mr. Carpitian?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be short. Looking at this list, I think 95% of them are good ideas, but they're not a necessity. So, and I think we need to have a number in front of some of these to see what the cost of this, let's say, I don't know, public piano program, for example, what is the cost? Or funding for nonprofit art organization, what is the estimated cost? So based on that, we can, we can say yes or no. But when I look at these things, maybe five, five or four or five of them are, I think, worthy of looking at, but the rest of them are just not necessary issues, basically.
Can I add to that as it came up? I'm, I'm looking at the, you know, potential expense offsets and this list. I know that the city has many properties throughout that we have leased to entities. I don't know what we, what process we go through to look at, you know, how much we're charging for these properties, who has them, where are there, what are the potential for revenues and, you know, potentially like either ending or upping those rental agreements?
Yes, we can, we can absolutely include that.
I hear things like, you know, the bridal shop is, the location's ours, and somehow, I don't know why a bridal shop would have, I don't know if they're getting a discount, I don't know. You know, they're just, I want to be able to see what we have out there, so.
Well, we'll put a list, there are not that many, but we'll put a list of spaces that we lease to private entities.
Mr. Brown?
So I just want to clarify, this list of council requests, you're not expecting us to discuss this now, I would hope. I mean, because all of these things, obviously, they're there because one or a number of us feel like there are benefits attached to them, right? They have costs and they have benefits. The only way to really think about these is, is really to drill down and think about, you know, what do we get? I know the other day I put up the electric shuttle service. That's something that we would have to look at because we know that through advertising on the, on the shuttle, there's some revenue that can be brought in, you can charge, perhaps if you choose, you can charge a riding fee, but it also brings business to our downtown, so there could be benefits in terms of increased sales tax revenue ultimately if there's more shopping and activity downtown. Each of these, we're going to be able to go through that and say, what does it cost? But also, what does it do in terms of benefits to the community? Otherwise, they wouldn't be here. So today, I mean, without a lot more information and a lot more time, I don't see how this is possible.
Right, and these, Councilmember Brownman, you are correct, over the last couple of years, 18 months, council members have brought them up and have gotten at least majority of council to agree with it, and we were supposed to bring staff reports... And we were supposed to bring staff reports back to council on every single one of these. But as you can imagine, with the number of requests that have come in, we haven't gotten to them. At minimum, we can add some rough cost estimates as to how much these will cost. But that'll be part of the conversations and the future study sessions.
But, I mean, ultimately, I think, when these items come back, that's when we'll be making these decisions, right? The item comes back, we discuss it, we discuss what the costs are, we discuss what the benefits are. We can then look at what the budget implications are, just like anything we do, and we will make a decision at that time. And when we make those decisions, I'm sure you'll be putting that decision or those decisions in context, as far as what we can afford, what else do we have to give up in order to do something?
Right.
That's what I would expect. Just to go over a list like this of things that obviously more than one of us feel are valid, at least to study, right? There's no real point.
I would also say that I think it would be nice for us to have the whole list. I haven't been able to access the dashboard in the way that I used to. And then the dashboard has both council requests and then you have a separate Excel of the additional that are not part of the work plan but have been requested. I think it would be nice for us to get the entire list.
Yes, we'll look into the technical difficulties with the dashboard. But we wanted, the intent was to give you the big picture scenario here, right after sharing with you the financial situations that we're facing. And most, although they may have some benefit, most or all of these asks will have financial impact, as you can imagine, and there has to be some give and take. We cannot, as we stand today with our budget situation, we cannot afford to implement some, if not most, of these items. But we just wanted to give you a full picture of where we stand. We showed you the budget, we showed you the deficit, and we're showing you the requests have come in. And the next slides are going to be on the potential revenue sources.
Mr., before you go to that, Mr. Carpaccia?
I think looking at this list, there's two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18, about 20 to 21 items on this list. Is this the, is the plan to bring every single item and discuss it here? Because the amount of time the staff has to spend to prepare a report, bring it here, agenda is, we won't have time to do anything else. I mean, I think we need to have a session to, give us an overview of what the entire thing is, like 20 items, what does it cost and everything? And then we choose which ones are the priority, five of them, and bring them forward. Because other than that, you're going to spend the rest of the year to discuss these issues. And if there's a correction, it has to come back again. If there's more ideas, it has to come. The amount of time that staff has to spend to prepare these reports, they can't do anything else. I think we need to be really careful as to which ones do we want, which ones we don't want. So which ones have priority? So we bring those back and discuss them first and budget them, see if we can fit them in our budget. That's just a comment to think about because all of these issues, if they want to come back, there's no way that you can do it in next year.
Yeah, I know. Unfortunately, these are the things that council has indicated by a vote.
Direction.
And direction as to what we wanted.
Right.
So if the suggestion is at some point, let's go through and prioritize or reassess the need for these, that's something we can do at an agenda during the council meeting. But I understand, you're saying, all the budget is out there, potential budget. By the way, these are things that may be on the horizon, may or may not be implemented that we've asked to at least look into. Okay, so let's go on. I didn't want to go too far past 11. We do probably have a speaker or two. So go ahead, Mr. Tactalian.
I promise you I'll be done in less than five minutes. There was, sorry, I keep going the wrong direction. Sorry, there was some reference to this slide before we got to this slide in terms of additional budget balancing strategies. I want to take a quick moment to say, these are not recommendations on staff's part at all. What this represents is really the fact that what we have put forward as potential budget balancing strategies to date, the one that reduces our existing deficit down to about 13.9, is as far as we believe we can go without impacting council priorities or the programs and services that this community comes to expect of us. However, if council's direction is to go and seek further cuts, what you're seeing on the screen is really a cross-section for illustrative purposes only, of the types of projects and programs that we would be forced to look at to recognize some level of cuts within the organization. These are, none of these are probably put on the screen and meant to speak to the merits of the programs, the value that they offer. They're just what we have left in some of our program-type opportunities within the departments. What I'm about to say is going to be very unpopular to a large segment of the community in some fashion, but for CSP, Community Services in Parks, we'd be looking at reducing or actually eliminating the Verdugo 10K, which was just last week. The total cost of that event, I want to say, is a little above $40,000 with some revenue offset. Still costs us about $8,000. The One Glendale Program, which is a program that Parks puts on for GUSD students, we bear the full cost of that program, including transportation costs, about $432,000 a year. Summer Concert Series, very popular in the community, about $78,000. One that I know is near and dear to at least one council member's heart, the Aquatics Program, which is a year-round program that we have in Glendale. That would be something that we would look at perhaps reducing to a partial year to recognize about $200,000 in savings. The list goes on and on. You know, Public Works Department, the cross, the school crossing guards, again, at a cost that we bear in its entirety. There's no cost sharing with GUSD on that. We just realized another $100-plus thousand increase to that contract in order to maintain the services. It's about $675,000 a year at this point. You know, library, really small bits and pieces of funding there, really a reflection that there really isn't much more room left to cut. And these are, again, not recommendations by any means. Community Development Department, the one I'll just touch on is canceling our third-party review for plans. This is essentially our use of third-party vendors to take the load off of our hands when we get backed up in an effort to try to, you know, continue maintaining a speedy turnaround for permits. If we are forced to go back and look for additional cuts, that type of a contract is one we would consider putting forward for consideration, which means projects will still get reviewed and approved. It's just going to delay it. And that's exactly opposite to what the principles of our current model are in this organization. It's about expediency and efficiency. So again, not an exhaustive list, really intended to be a cross-section, but truly reflective of where we're at in terms of what we have left to cut or reduce. As promised earlier, I mentioned that cutting our way is not the solution to our long-term obligations. We really need to consider seriously some potential expense offsets. We talked about the items on the upper left-hand corner of this particular slide last year in depth. I don't expect to go into a lot of detail on any one of these items, but these are items that we discussed. None of them received majority consensus from the city council to pursue. Quarter cent sales tax is a new one. That would net about $10 million a year if we implemented it. Assuming that went on the ballot in June of '26, we would begin to realize some revenue from that in January of '27 for a partial year, but it would really be in the '28, '29 year that we realize a full year's worth of roughly $9 to $10 million. Business license tax, we've discussed over the years on and off, the potential for about $2.1 to $4.8 million. Parking tax, this would be a tax on parking in both public and private lots. We did do a parking study over the course of the year as we had committed to council. So these are fairly accurate numbers, we believe, somewhere between 2.2 and 4.1. Transfer tax and parcel tax, we discussed in detail last year, not going to get into the details of that. Hotel tax, typically known as TOT, not a whole lot there. We're already pretty high in terms of what our tax rate is. There are other agencies with higher rates for their TOT, but they're typically destination spots. You see Anaheim, you see Malibu, San Diego, agencies of that caliber. One thing that we haven't discussed previously is a commercial vacancy tax. That's a new discussion that council could potentially have, but it would really focus on commercial vacancies in our different corridors. Bonds, not necessarily a revenue generator, that's why we're calling this slide an expense offset, whether we decide to consider some sort of a lease revenue bond for infrastructure needs or potentially revisiting the idea of floating pension obligation bonds to address our long-term unfunded actuarial pension liabilities. It remains an option. We have asked our tax, our bond advisor to run some scenarios for us, like she did last year, just to identify, based on what our funded liability is today and market interest rates are, I'm sorry, yeah, what the market interest rates are, what that spread needs to be between what CalPERS realizes and how low a rate would make sense for us to even consider floating any kind of a pension obligation bond. If there's desire from council to discuss either one of those two, we'll see about getting our tax bond advisor to one of our future study sessions, if possible. Transfers, councilmember Mayor Najarian asked about that. That remains an option. There is some room for additional growth or increase in that segment. And then new items. These are items that haven't been discussed previously, in detail anyway, with the exception of one or two, but potentially establishing and charging a concierge fee for development-type projects. Advertising revenue from digital billboards could net somewhere between $300,000 and $1 million, potentially even more than that based on number of locations that we identify. Ground leasing of city property, the value of that remains to be determined. It really depends on the number of locations that we would do this with and the type of operations that go into those locations. New idea with respect to implementation of an ordinance from health and safety perspective that just so happens to have a positive benefit to the revenues of our operations as well, which is the implementation of a soft story retrofitting and permitting ordinance. It's really meant to address the seismic risks associated with some of the older buildings that don't meet current day seismic requirements. Transfer of air development rights, something that we haven't talked about, but a new idea that was shared with us through Community Development Department. Increasing our parking fees, we will be talking about this as part of our third budget study session. This essentially would be looking at either reducing the 90-minute free parking or increasing the parking rates themselves, or a combination thereof, as well as an idea associated with EV charge in the public right-of-way. Couple of things not on this list, but I still want to mention, I'm going to end it there. One opportunity to potentially, and it's not an expense offset, it's not a long-term solution, but the one thing we have not taken into consideration in '25, '26 is potentially advancing use of our Section 115 trust from '27, '28 to '25, '26. So essentially, starting it this year as opposed to in '27, '28. Of course, it means that if we did $5 million a year consistently, we would run out two years sooner than we expected. We had originally aligned it to try to mirror the peaks in what we anticipate our expenses to be to try to soften that blow, but that could potentially have either a $1 million, $5 million, $10 million, or the full $43 million impact in one year, freeing up money in the general fund. So there is about $43 million in that account today, and it's earning an interest rate of roughly about a little over 4% last we checked yesterday. I'm beginning to lose my voice. Yeah, go for it.
Can I just add one? One of the other items that I had proposed was the public safety development fee.
Yes, we can certainly add that to the list. Our initial research has indicated that at least what cities that have that development impact fee hasn't really garnered a significant amount, but we can certainly add it to the list.
I mean, if we have things like, you know, cutting $8,000 here and, you know, $10,000 there, then surely we can offset some of that.
Yes, we can. That particular item is going to do, to need a lot of administrative work, but we'll add it to the list.
I think one of the things that I do want to comment on, a lot of this was on last year's budget. And I recognize that most of this is coming out of CDD work, the potential revenue sources, like it's their department that would need to put it together, aside from the taxes. The digital billboards, ground leasing, soft story, transfer, I think it would be helpful for us because some of these have been on there for quite a while, and we still have a to-be-determined number on them. I would propose that we perhaps look at ways to help prioritize CDD items that are coming in order to make sure that, again, we don't, you know, we're not here again next year with these items not having come to council. So if there are things that we need to help shift around, say, hey, don't work on that report for now, we prefer to have these revenue conversations instead, you know, looking to Mr. Calvert's leadership and helping identify those priorities for us to have these conversations earlier versus some other items that may be on this very long list.
Yes, I agree. And as you know, Mr. Calvert and his team's plate is pretty full. And part of it's been council's request above and beyond their routine needs for updating our zoning codes, et cetera.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
A couple of quick questions.
We do. We have two speakers.
We'll come back. After the speaker, we'll have final questions or comments. Yes.
We have two speakers. The first speaker is Herbert Mulano. You have three minutes.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Mulano. I want to extend first my appreciation for all the city employees and their services that they do with integrity and dedication. My observations are based on the published annual comprehensive financial report, information from the census, and other information that is in the city's website. Most of the information is primarily having to do with the general fund, although one page deals with citywide expenses. What I want to show you here is a history from the year 2000 to now, whereas the inflation rate was 82% during that period of time. The cost for police and fire have increased exponentially, 259% increase in the police department, 307% for the fire department. And as a comparison, Public Works increased less than the cost of inflation, the increase in inflation by 12%. Next slide, please. Before we look at the general fund, actual expenditures, again, we have a... Could you go to the next page, please?
You just have one slide.
There's only one?
Yeah.
All right. Well, you have a copy of, a green sheet that I gave you here. That page has to do with the increases in CalPERS. The payment to CalPERS in the year 2004 was $2 million all-inclusive, meaning the city's expense and the employee contribution. By 2024, that expense went up to 95. That's $95 million last year alone. That's an increase of 465%, of which you have no control. And they are dependent, if the economy goes down, it's even worse because you're going to get hit with those additional increases in future years. In addition to that, we have an unfunded liability of 894% increases from what it was in 2004. That's the amount of funds that are still pending that we pay CalPERS in the future. By comparison, the median household income has really gone from $50,000 in 2004 to $81,000 in 2020 to $84,000, according to the census, by 2024. So an increase of 65%. In other words, the taxpayers' rate of... In other words, the, the taxpayers' rate of increase in their income is not keeping up with the cost of policing, fire and the pension, which are your three primary costs. My suggestion to you all is that pay attention to those increases that are exponential and put the focus there, because if you're not willing to have the police and fire control their costs, there is no way you can balance a budget properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question, Paul.
Thank you.
So, I have a, I have a quick question on your first page of your slide, the, the population. Uh, you indicated in 2004 is 199, 199,000 and 2024 is 181,000. Are these?
Yeah, th- these are from the census and the, the last one is a census projection. The last number we have for 2023 is a 183,000. The population did increase by 2018, it broke 200,000. But since 2018, we have had a, a decrease of roughly 1% per year, actually between 1 and 2%. So, I try to be as accurate with these numbers as possible, but some of these are estimates from the, uh, from the census and the other procedures that the government takes to try to get an estimate. But these are declines since 2018.
Thank you.
By the way, Councilmember Garpetian, the, the estimated or the number uh from Department of Finance as to the population of Glendale doesn't match the census. So there's discrepancy, you know?
And do we have a number as to what the numbers of the Department of Finance is?
Uh, 191,586.
191,000.
And we, we also, in preparation for this, did check with some of our agencies nearby. Uh, and with respect to finance numbers, they all use Department of Finance numbers as well.
Yeah, because I was looking at these numbers and we built about 4,000 to 6,000 units in last 10 years. And even if the, if you go with the numbers of the finance department, still almost 10,000, you know, we are, we're, we're less, 10,000 uh people, uh, less than what it was in 2004 and we built 6,000 units. So the numbers that are shifting around, it's, 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 it's mind-boggling. I thought we, uh, we built housing for our constituents to stay in Glendale and not move out. And but now we're seeing all these houses being built and the numbers went down by almost 5 to 8%. And uh by state or the SCAG telling us to, based on Reno numbers, we still have to build another 13,000 units. And I don't know where we're going with that, but that's a different, different uh discussion. Can I ask a couple of quick questions, the ones that I had from last night? Or we have more, oh, we have more?
Second speaker.
Yes, we have one more speaker, Beth Brooks.
I have a suggestion, uh, because I see the budget is so tight. I know that Pasadena, although they have rent control, they have a rent registry where landlords have to pay a fee. I don't know if it's per apartment or per building, and I think you could possibly fund any rent relief program with that. Uh, I think that's viable. I think that, I know my landlord has raised the rent, you know, the maximum for years. So I think there's money there. Uh, I think you should, you should think about doing that. I know there's a hiring freeze, but I think that you, like Mr. Garpetian said, you definitely have to look at the, uh, the consultants that you're paying so much money for. It's like the, I know I love the water, you know, the water consultant, but really, do you need somebody to do that, to take people on a tour of, you know, of water plants? I don't see that you need to do that. You had the consultant to discuss with uh businesses about changing to plastic forks and knives. Do you need that? I mean, if you hire somebody who's a grant writer, if you hire somebody who's a, who has sort of general knowledge, you can just have an employee who handles that. And then they get a little specialized knowledge, you know, they learn uh how to do that. I think you could save millions of dollars, I don't know what you spend, but when I look at the, uh, the agendas, you're spending a lot of money. So I think you could definitely have those two places where you have savings and also you have revenue. Uh, I didn't see on the list of, of good-to-haves, you know, or have-to-haves, uh, a lawyer for the rent relief program, because I do think you need enforcement. Uh, maybe, you know, the city attorney could do that, but then he'd be a lawyer for the renters, so I'm guessing not, because he's a lawyer for the city. So I'm guessing that, that's not how it works. Uh, but I do think that you should charge landlords. I think you would, you would get the money that way. And if section eight ends, then that's going to be a nightmare. So that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
And is that it for our speakers? Okay, so before we adjourn, let's go back and have last bites. Mr. Garpetian.
Thank you. Mr. Takalian, you mentioned parking tax for private, uh, public and private parking lots. What do you mean by private? Is it, is it like a big shopping center that is owned by a private entity? We want to tax their parking? How, how does that work?
Essentially, if there's a private parking lot that charges for parking, there would be a percentage surcharge or a tax associated with that. So a $10 fee would have a $1 tax associated with it.
Okay. And the, the transfer of air development rights, we will, I, I would like to be brief on it. I know we cannot discuss it here, there's not enough time. But uh, the business summit that we had, uh, it, did we have any revenues on it that offsetted the cost and now we, our cost was 150,000 dollars?
I, I am not familiar with the specifics of, of the funding mechanism, uh, Mr. Calvert. Are there any revenues associated with the small business summit? Um, or is it an entirely just a cost issue for us?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, or good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. No, it's primarily just a cost. We do collect a modest fee, uh, just a couple of dollars for registration, but otherwise it's just a cost.
But the businesses that were there and they had booths, they did not pay for being there. They just were there to support the, the summit.
Some offer a sponsorship as part of it, so that offsets some of our cost internally.
That's all I'm asking.
But not a revenue generator.
Right, so the sponsorship was, do we know how much was the sponsorship?
Uh, we can get that information together and send it over to council. We'd have to pull all those numbers together. We just finished that, so we don't have everything down yet.
Got it. Thank you. Oh, as far as the uh increase, this is an option, so I don't want people to go crazy. On, on the, the transfer, if you increase the, the amount of the transfer from G W P, is that what, yeah, the G W P, it would not affect the rates, right? You don't, you don't have to increase the rates in order to increase the, the transfer? If we decide to do that.
Councilmember Garpetian, so um the, the city isn't currently in the middle, middle of a five-year rate plan. So if it, um, as long as those, and then the transfer was built into the current rate plan, so as long as any, any increase doesn't affect the, the, the reserves or the budget of the G W P, that, that can be increased um at the, at the time that there's a subsequent review of rates. Whatever rate, whatever transfer amount is the city is imposing will be included in that future rate plan. So if we were, if the council, for example, this fiscal year were to increase the transfer, assuming that's something the utility could absorb, um, then no, there would be no impact to rates because that rate plan is already set.
Yeah, because the rates went up by cumulative by, by over 50% in the last two years. And we have a new one coming up, you know, the rest of it is last leg of it is, if I'm not mistaken, this July. So that did not help us to have that opportunity to increase the, uh, the transfer?
I'm, I'm, I think earlier in the presentation, I mentioned that the transfer amount, um, well, two things. The transfer amount has gone up modestly. Uh, just based on, it's the same percentage, but the base has changed. The other part is with the last rate increase, um, that took part of this year. We do our transfers at year-end based on revenues generated, not projected revenues. So we'll, we'll essentially realize, that's why there's such a big increase in charges for other services in 2526. It's based on the new revenue base after the last increase.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmembers.
I think I already gave a pretty long list of things that I would, I would be looking for um before the next session. And I would please ask that they, they be sent like in the next 24 hours.
Well, we are best councilmembers, Satrion, to put that list together, but I'm, I'm confident we can get it done the next day or so.
Okay, I mean, us getting these presentations even the night before makes it diff, I get it, but it makes it difficult for us to...
Understand, but please do understand as well that the team was working till uh 8 o'clock last night.
I know, I was here.
To finalize the details. So as soon as they, they got done, you, you receive the package.
Okay.
So these are our kind of umbrella comments, last comments?
Yeah, because we'd like...
Okay, because we're wrapping up, okay. Um, well, it's obviously sobering what we're hearing and I hope the public gets, gets this message because there, there are no real easy solutions here. Um, as I said a couple of times, I'll just repeat again. Um, I really don't like the shell game approach to balancing our budget and, you know, I understand everything you've said, we don't want these external funds to be overfunded or underfunded. But I do worry about us, uh, because we've done it in the past where we've deferred maintenance on a lot of things, uh, to balance our budgets, only to push that problem to a future council and a future community, and I, I really oppose that. I, I believe, you know, as staff is saying, we're going to need both new revenues and we're going to need cuts, uh, and none of them are going to be fun. I don't know what the balance is, but it looks like, you know, we, we, we need to find something like 30 to 35 million dollars a year in order to sustain ourselves over the long term. So um, looking at, you know, uh, uh, obviously we want to first look at, um, I'll turn to revenues. First look at revenues that don't reach into anybody's pocket, right? That's what we want to do first. There are some, right, there are some. We can do a better job, as Councilmember Satrion has said many, many times, you know, seeking grants, right? And we do have a request there for um additional kind of legislative, I forget what we call it, lobbying. You know, that's something that could pay for itself, okay? Could, could, um, if we can, if we can find. Uh, so that's, that's obviously something, you know, we talked about billboards, it's a small amount, but I would definitely support us uh looking into that more. Ground leases, absolutely. Um, we have these huge parking lots that are significantly underutilized and we can kill two birds with one stone. We can get housing that we desperately need for the community and we can generate revenue for ourselves. There's no reason we shouldn't look at that. Um, I think that's a no-brainer. I do have a question and I'll just put it out there and not really expect a response now, but um I know we've been working on our broadband um, uh, infrastructure and, you know, we should be thinking about running a profit center, right? Running a broadband business, um, whether it's, I mean, I don't think it would be home broadband, but it would be for commercial businesses. And I think the broadband services that our residents and our businesses get are generally subpar. It's a very controlled monopolized environment and I think there's maybe an opportunity for us to provide a service and make some money from it. So I'd like to look at that. But, you know, and, and the other thing I think is, is um hotels. I think, you know, in the past, I've been against new hotels because, you know, I just thought, well, we should have housing, not hotels. But I've come to learn that, you know, hotels are an important revenue generator. It's not just about raising the T O T, but it's just about getting more bedrooms that are paying T O T. I think we should really be thinking about how we attract more hotels. So those are things that, you know, are kind of pain-free, um, but I don't think that's going to cover it. I think on the tax side, I do think we are going to have to look at the sales tax, the quarter cent sales tax. It's one of those things like Measure S. If we don't take advantage of it ourselves, the AQMD or Metro or somebody else is going to come grab it. And then our residents will still be paying it, people shopping here will still be paying it, but it just won't come to us, it'll go somewhere else. Not that it'll be wasted necessarily, but it won't be within our control. So I think we have to look at that, that has to be on the 2026 ballot. I also think we should definitely look at parking. We should definitely be looking at um what can we do to get the rates at the point? And this is not just for revenue, but this is also to make sure our parking is utilized at the right level, right? There's parking strategies which you want to employ for business development purposes, right? You want the right amount of parking utilization. You don't want people sitting, you know, leaving their cars for very long. You want people coming in and out, getting the circulation, doing their shopping and then moving on. So we need to, you know, right-size, if that's the word we want to use, our, our parking fees. But in some cases, look at them also as revenue enhancers when we're talking about our parking structures. Now, I think those are, you know, and, and taking a measure to the, the ballot for parking, uh, for raising the tax on third-party parking, on private, private parking. I think that's something we should do. So that's, that's kind of my overall thought on this. I did want to um mention something and respond to something that Ms. Brooks brought up. We, you know, the, the, the residents of Los Angeles County passed Measure A and Measure A is going to be bringing in some money, which we haven't talked about, for both housing production and homeless services. And it's on my mind because I, I just heard a presentation, I'm on, um, I'm on the Glendale, well, what's it called, the Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena Regional Housing Trust. And so we had a presentation on, uh, from La Casa on one portion of Measure A, and we are going to be getting $4 million annually. I mean, it, give or take, it depends on, uh, ta, ta, you know, sales taxes that are collected by the county, but we should be getting, just on a portion of that, $4 million uh every year that we can use on things like purchasing land for affordable housing, but also on um some rental assistance programs and the point that Ms. Brooks mentioned, which is legal services for, for tenants. That isn't allowed use. We can apply some of that money, um, either to provide, you know, third-party low-cost or free legal services for tenants. Or I don't, we have to look into this, whether we could apply some of that money to having our own enforcement division, which I understand Burbank, I don't know if it's a recent thing or they've had it for a while, but they have a, an enforcement division for their, um, their rental rights ordinances. So I, I, and I support that and I've brought that up before, it's not a new thing. I think we need to provide um better legal services to tenants because they are at a disadvantaged position when they are in disputes. And um, on the thing on the rent registry, which is interesting, because I brought up rent registry four years ago and had my head handed to me, uh, if you remember. Now, rent registry, I, I looked at it from the point of view of data collection. You can't um make that, you can't generate revenue from that, you know, because of Prop 218 and, and, and Prop 26, right? You can't just say, we're going to slap on a fee that's going to bring in money that we can use for, uh, for rent or support. But you can have a fee that covers the cost of it. So I just want to make sure that Ms. Brooks understands that there are legal, legal restraints, legal conditions that we, we, we face and we can't just use that um as a, as a, as a profit center. But I still think it's a good idea and uh, if anybody wants to bring it up again, I'd be supportive just because it helps us know what's actually going out on in, in our, in our rental space. But that was it. So, thank you.
As far as the hotels go, I think we're losing a lot to Pasadena because they have more rooms than we do. And uh, World Cup is around the corner, 2028 Olympics are around the corner. If you want to attract more hotel developers, I think, uh, I wasn't here, I don't know what was taken away, but I think a lot of incentives that we had in downtown area was taken away. So that will, uh, that will deter developers from coming in. Maybe we should look into it. Uh, but as far as the leases of uh city parking lots or city-owned properties, many cities do this. They, when you want to lease something that's a vacant land, it's the worst thing you can, you can lease. There's no value in it, it's just a vacant land. They have to go do all their plannings and everything. But many cities do this, they, they plan as to what they want to see on that piece of parking lot and kind of get, get it through the entitlement and say, this is, I don't know, an acre of land, we can build 100 units here, 20 units here, 50, whatever that number is, with the retail that you want in the bottom, if you want to make it a mixed use. So when they come in, half the, half the project is done. They don't have to spend a year, year and a half on going through the entitlement process because that costs money. So then you can charge a lot more than just a vacant land that has no value. If you own a vacant land, you can't even depreciate it because there's nothing on it. So I think we need to look into that as well uh and see how can we work on that, that C D D can, can uh bring some ideas later and say, this is what we can do. And then you can control... and say, this is what we can do. And then you can control what goes on. You won't lease a land, and they want to build a 20-story building on a little tiny land. So it's, that's one other thing. The other last item that I want to mention is some of the, the neighborhoods that they have this very uniform developments on it in the past, like there is a couple of them right behind Home Depot on Harvard Street. They're all little bungalows. They're, they're not a historic district, but they could be, but they're all mild-high residential zoning. So what we looked at at some point in the past was that transfer density. They will transfer their density, they sell their density to someone else, so they, but they won't redevelop their own site. So if they need to keep the property, but they're financially are not in a good shape, they can sell the density to someone else who wants to build somewhere else, like two units, five units, whatever the number is. But they won't develop their sites anymore, but they have the funds to keep the property. That's something that maybe we need to look into in the future as well, that, that density transfer option. Other than that, I think we need more revenues, but we have to figure out how, how to do it so it won't affect the quality of life or it won't make the life a lot more expensive than what it is today. Thanks.
Thank you. And I guess just in closing, I would, I would caution my colleagues on the idea of rent registry and providing counsel to tenants on the premise that they are somehow disadvantaged in the eviction process. I, I will take any one of my colleagues or anyone else in the public to Department R in Pasadena, where evictions are done. And it, everything in the process is geared to the advantage of the tenant, from the civil code to the administration of that code, to the noticing procedures, to the administrative work in the courts, to the handling of a execution of possession by the Sheriff's Department. It is, it is not what anyone might be thinking, that the big bad landlord comes in and yanks a tenant out. It's really quite the opposite. And, and of course, I can, I'll be happy to take anyone down there just to look and see how the timeline goes for that. This, moving on. This is a very difficult budget season for every municipality in the state and maybe even across the country. I was speaking to some of the county supervisors yesterday, and they are, I mean, if you think we have problems, they have incredibly severe problems, because they deal with so many more of the humanitarian issues, healthcare, homelessness, and their budgets are being dramatically slashed. And they're more directly affected by the federal policies that are, that are coming down. Other cities are in a real bad spot. The, the only thing I can tell the public, and my colleagues know this, is that we will look at every possible way to make this a balanced budget for this year and keeping our eye on the succeeding years to cause the least disruption to our quality of life and to their pocketbooks as well. And that is what we're doing. And that video, if anyone's interested, please tune into GTV6 or our website. It really is a very good, I'm not sure if we put that together.
We did.
It was very good.
Special thanks to Henri Safari and Brian Howler and GTV6.
Yeah, very good overview of the general concepts that we all deal with when we try and put a budget together. So saying that, is there a motion to, well, let's say we'll see you May 20th for our second budget session, 9:00 AM. We'll have another video from the departments, the citywide budget 25, 26, and a discussion of vacancy reporting and anything else that colleagues want to bring up at that time that we've touched on today.
I'll move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.